No, that was quick.
That's right.
Quiet.
I like that.
Yes, it's in the spirit of Christmas. We have a quorum, I think, so we're all set to roll with reading. And so first of all, the agenda and the motion to approve the agenda is presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? The favors have it, so we can move on. And the approval of meeting minutes. These are the meetings of November fourteenth. And has everybody reviewed the meds?
Yes.
You have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion to approve the November fourteenth minutes as written.
Right, any observation questions? All in favor?
Second.
Second, sorry.
I'll second.
All right, any against approved? Everybody in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, all right. My goodness gracious, I'm running along quickly because we have a length of service award. And I don't want this presentation to last twenty years. So especially because we have a lot of family here. It's Robert Mike Jacobs, of course, and his mother is here, I hear, and his sister. And I don't know, I didn't see his, no, I won't say that. I was gonna say I didn't see his girlfriend, but that wouldn't be proper to say. So just teasing him, he's been here so long that he sort of knows how we work. So just like to give a brief overview of Bob's work in twenty years.
Okay. Today, we have the pleasure of acknowledging and celebrating the contributions of one of our most dedicated employees, Mike Jacobs. Mike's journey with the Metropolitan Commission began on August twenty-second, two thousand and one, when he joined us as a contract cleaning specialist. In December two thousand and four, Mike's dedication and hard work earned him permanent status as a commission employee. Since then, he has consistently gone above and beyond in ensuring that our buildings are not just clean, but welcoming and well maintained. His attention to detail and priding his work have made a lasting impact on our team and the entire organization. In recent years, Mike has expanded his responsibilities and taken on the additional task of cleaning the engineering building. Mike's ability to manage these additional responsibilities while maintaining high standards creates a comfortable and professional environment for all, which speaks to his strong work ethic. Additionally, Mike serves as our expert tree decorator. Year after year, he brings his creativity and festive spirits to the two buildings, helping to transform the spaces with holiday decorations. Mike's work is a testament to his reliability, dedication, and passion for what he does. Mike is an integral part of the Metropolitan Commission, and we are fortunate to have him on our team. We appreciate the hard work and positive attitude he brings every day. Please join me in congratulating Mike on his twenty years of service to the commissioner.
Can we have Mike's mother and sister and family join him for the picture, please?
Back on family.
The whole family.
Whole family.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Everybody else, let's get up here, come on.
It appears, it appears to, the mother, come and join us. Oh, just hang on a second, okay. Yeah, oh, okay. It appears to me that he's got a few friends. So. Congratulations. The wood. Thank you, George. What is the next one? You say we have, oh yeah, oh yeah. All right, we're back in session with some good news. Any, any bad news we have the lawyer talk about, but good news goes to George.
Hey, good afternoon, good afternoon, commissioners. The next item is, is a little bit of good news. The deputy executive director of Legit, our local government insurance trust, meant to be here today. He was unable to come. As you recall, back in November, I think it was November fourteenth, you approved us to move forward with an initiative that we had funded in our budget. It was fleet telemetry, the tracking of vehicles and non-motorized assets. One of the reasons that we wanted to implement this was from a risk management and safety standpoint. There are a lot of benefits, whether it be promoting driver safety, reducing accident rates, helping us focus on areas for additional training, help us with claims, investigations, but it could potentially lower our insurance rates. There was a grant opportunity available through the local government insurance trust. I'd like to thank Judy Goman, who spearheaded that, she's our risk manager and safety officer. We submitted the request. The fiscal impact of implementing this this year is about fifteen thousand dollars. They gave us a check for ninety percent of that. They gave us a check for over fourteen thousand dollars to implement this. We never thought our insurance carrier would be that interested. We knew they would be interested, but not to provide this amount of funding to us. So on behalf of Mr. Boland, who would have liked to have been here, I'd like to read the email that he sent to the board. It's just two sentences long, so if you bear witness, I would appreciate it. The Legit Risk Management Committee met on December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and approved Saint Mary's County Metropolitan Commission grant request in the amount of fourteen thousand fifty-four dollars. The committee, after careful review, decided to fund your request. Their thought was that this funding could be used as the first phase and would welcome a follow-up request for additional funding once this program was in place. So what that means is the half-year implementation of funding ninety percent, and next year, we can perhaps look forward to funding a large portion of that request. So good work by everybody and to your leadership for going along with our recommendations to implement. I think it's going to go out really, really great, and I think it's going to be great for customer service as well.
Great, and thank you for good news.
Absolutely.
Any more good news?
The whole, the whole day is good news.
It is.
The whole day.
Okay. All right, so we're on the consent agenda. Has everyone taken a look at the items on the agenda? Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Secondary?
I'll second the motion.
Observations, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, and that moves us on to new business. And I guess we start off with Patty and.
We're doing the consent agenda together.
Sorry?
We're doing the consent agenda. We never, we're doing new business, we don't, we're not doing enough? Oh, okay, sorry. What do I, oh, what the hell?
So, ma'am, commissioners, we have two water use filling adjustments required. The first is from Oakwood Lodge Neighborhoods. The homeowners association, they had a leak in their water supply to their pier in July and August. After we sent them to continuous flow letters, they responded. They had a plumber out, they replaced the water line down at their pier, and their usage has returned to normal. Their normal usage was two hundred, uh, two hundred gallons, and they peaked at one hundred and twenty-four thousand gallons. So staff recommends the approval of the adjustment, and we have provided the recommended function for it.
All right, and does anyone have a motion in front of them?
I did, I guess, okay, go ahead. Move that the commission approve option two in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-nine cents owed for the August twenty-twenty-four bill and the four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents for the September twenty-twenty-four bill for a combined billing total of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, which represents a total deduction of seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen.
You have a second, or?
Second.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? They have the two hundred thousand gallons.
Thank you. And then we have another one, our second filling adjustment is from a Leonardtown residence. And again, we did send our continuous flow letter, we also tagged the door at the residence. The owner had a plumber out, it was discovered a galvanized water line up to the house, had eroded and was seeping into their yard. They did replace the water line below the cross line, and service has returned to normal usage. They peaked at ninety-six thousand gallons, and their normal use is around five thousand gallons. They did recommend approving this filling adjustment.
Questions?
I guess their grass looks good, huh?
I have a question in the letters that you sent, do you set a deadline for, for applying?
Not the continuous flow. But they do have, they do have ninety days to request a filling use adjustment.
Mm-hmm. Really benefit in giving them a fifteen or thirty-day deadline for addressing the issue? Or, you know, because it seems like a long, long time, and a lot of water that goes to waste.
Right, and sometimes they don't respond when we send those, they just ignore them. But like the Leonardtown one, we actually went to the door. The first one was the homeowners association, it was a pier, so we had difficulty reaching someone, and we couldn't just tag, you know, a property. So it took a couple of letters to them before they responded to us.
Any benefits, I don't think, anyone else, please join in, any benefits for giving them a deadline for, for applying?
I mean, if they, the reply would be to, to request an adjustment, and of course, we, they have to fix the, you know, make the repair. If they don't, then they're going to fall into our excessive use category, which we're going to discuss later in this meeting. And there is a timeline for that.
We've had issues with your response to this from the industry in general. Try to come back to things, and you can try to do anything for a day or two, but it's not going to be as much as you're going to be allowed. So we haven't really heard of the third one.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, this is a question, so it may warrant consideration when we're looking at.
As far as this, this policy goes, they have ninety days to request the adjustment.
Well, Mike, concern, I'm not over there going to ask for the adjustment. Although that all seems like a long time, but rather notice being given, you know, to do something with our custody.
Yeah, and they will fall into the next category, which is our excessive use.
And commissioners, I might say, the meter, we have to make sure that our other department does that. And the meter needs to be done properly. So there's a time factor there, if we're able to switch over from AMI to AMI technology, and we can reduce the time, then we can notify them. And that's going to be started probably about thirty days or so. So right now, we have to catch up with their repair, a month after they make, so we have to, you know, be careful.
Okay, yes, thank you. Any other questions?
In a situation like this here, in a place where we could turn it off, or it's just flowing into the river? If they're not responding, if, if thirty days, we just kind of shut it off, so it's not a waste? Or is that not leaking?
I don't think we would disconnect it.
Probably.
This is a vow, we were supposed to do that.
Right.
Because, you know, for all the failures, right? Oh, and, you know.
Yeah.
Basically, it's been running for thirty days when we find out. We give them thirty days to repair it, and then we have to do the follow-up metering to make sure they repair it, and that's sort of the main thing. It's actually the shortest amount of time given technology. So again, when we go to our AMI technologies, I hope we can do it, we'll be able to show.
Yeah? All right, next item is.
The motion.
Oh, yes, do the motion, yeah, we're too quick about that. So we have a motion to approve the recommendation.
All right. Move that the commission approve option two in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents owed for the September twenty-twenty-four bill and four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents to the October twenty-twenty-four bill for a combined total of nine hundred and five dollars and eight cents, which represents a total deduction of five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight.
All right, and any questions, all in favor?
I'll, I'll do a second, sorry.
A second, very good. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Okay, move on.
Thank you. The next item is the annual tax sale. This item, as you know, we have first lien on our property, which allows my com to participate in the annual tax sale, which is held annually by the county treasurer. Allows us to collect on delinquent accounts. The criteria is, as of October first of every year, if you are more than six months delinquent, then you fall into the category of first lien, and we then can collect the tax sale. We contact each of these owners, we allow them to request a deferral, and this year, we've had two requests for deferrals. The first customer has a balance of seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. They're actually not connected to our system, but they do have an EDU assigned. And this property was part of an older resolution where you were, if we ran services past your home, you were required to connect. So they fell under that, but they haven't connected, but they get charged as if they're non-metered. So they do have a monthly bill. They're retired couples, limited income. They do try to make payments. Again, at seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, it's, you know, not excessive. So staff recommends that we do defer them this year, we'll, we'll continue to watch their account. If they don't, you know, continue to make payments, then next year, they could still be eligible.
How many people do we have that are in the same position, the same type of, kind of ordering of, of that also?
Uh, there's not a lot left that are not connected. Less than a hundred? Probably less than a hundred.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So it's not very capable of doing that. So are we going to talk only about this, this particular case?
There's two requests for deferral. And for those that are not connected, that fell into that category from that older resolution, if they ever, if their private system well or septic fails, then they will be required to connect. The health department will not allow them to, you know, repair their septic or drill any well.
Okay.
And again, they do make an effort to make payments, they just have not made one within the six-month window.
Okay. Any questions, observations?
Well, my observation is, you said that, you know, that seven hundred is not a lot of money, but it sounds like it might be a lot of money to them.
Yeah.
That's, you know, your MFP kicks in or something like that, for sure.
And we do require, when you send in a deferral request, tax returns, proof of income, things like that. And so these do, did qualify under those.
Right. And they're, they're tying. And it's Christmas.
All right, so I think if they're going to make a motion.
That time of year to do this.
Do we want to, number two first to make a motion on?
What do you want to do? You have a second.
What we next have?
We can do both, I'll, I'll do the second one also here. So our second customer has a balance of approximately two thousand five hundred, a little more. This individual is disabled and on very limited income. Same thing, they, but they have not made a payment since two thousand and twenty-three. They were on the tax sale back in two thousand and twenty-two, but they, before it went to sale, they made full payment. Again, this is an even lower income individual with, with children in the home. So I, again, I, I suggest we follow the account, and see if, you know, they'll make an effort, if not, they'll, they'll be on the tax sale next year.
How much, how much do we work here?
This one's two, around two thousand five hundred.
And have, have we dealt with them before, if we, if we, yes?
Yeah, we have dealt with them before.
And we defer to each, each year?
No, no, actually, the last time they, they paid it right before it went to tax sale. And maybe they'll try to do that, both of these may try to do it again, but.
Okay, observations, questions? So we have two motions. Can we do it in one, I guess we have to do it individually? All right, you're set up for the first one?
I am.
Maybe the second one?
Move that to commission, I'm sorry, move that, accrue, first one, move that to commission approval request. So we're going, we're moving.
The first one, yeah.
Just the one on the top, okay. I'm sorry, I can barely see that. That's commission approved the request for the deferral of the two oh two five tax sale on account number one six four one eight dash zero.
Is that the, is that the first or the second?
That's the first, that is the first one.
Is it, all right. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Any questions, observations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. All right, and.
I got the second.
You're the second one?
Uh, move that the commission approved the request for deferral of the twenty twenty-five tax sale on account number one one seven six four dash zero.
That's it.
We're not going to read the bottom one.
All right, do a second.
I'll second.
Uh, questions, observations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, so.
One more.
Carry on, you still here, you've got one more.
Commissioners, as part of the current fiscal year FY two thousand and twenty-five budget, you approved a two percent cost of living adjustment to be effective January first. Today, I'm requesting to make the COLA effective on December twentieth. And that is the start of a pay period, which includes January first. It, with the holidays, it's just going to be very difficult to implement the cost of living on January first due to the, how our system, our financial software works, and people being out of the office. So it's about seven working days earlier, and it's approximately a five thousand dollar impact to start it early.
Observations, questions? Does that, does that go to this year's taxes for them or next year's?
That, it'll be on next year because taxes are based on the actual payday, and the payday will be in January. So it'll be on next year's.
Yeah, makes sense. All right, any other questions, observations?
I'll read the motion. Yeah. Move that the commission approved the budgeted mid-year cost of living adjustment, COLA, of two percent to be effective with the pay period beginning December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, replacing the original effective date of January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do a second or?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, thank you, Patty.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a.
A coffee break motion.
A possible motion, yeah. Since we're talking about the new year and the holiday season and all that, I like to make a motion that we give the employees December twenty-third as appreciation day, holiday present, whatever you want to call it, to go.
Is this the moment to, to do that, or should we?
Can we do that at this time?
Commissioners' time would probably be better.
Yeah, I thought so.
And I need to think about it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, okay, we won't forget it.
Thought about that.
It's a nice theme, though.
Okay, so we have the Ed Hoven and Patty on the water conservation policy.
Today, we're presenting you the water conservation policy updates. This was first presented to you back in, it's early two thousand and twenty-two. We've also updated the policy back in two thousand and twenty-three, and bringing you today some, some other updates as well. As you know, this year was a relatively dry year. So this is really the first year that we, we've really implemented the water conservation policy. Some grants and reports this year, you know, we've sent a lot of letters out to customers who were exceeding the usage. Some of that, some of those letters, I think the language was a little bit ominous. I think we, we looked at that and we changed the policy. So we, we changed both, we have a ten thousand gallon limit and a thirty thousand gallon per month limit. How we come up with those, that ten and thirty thousand gallons per month limit, actually is through MDE. MDE issues a appropriations permit for each water system, and they are the ones who determine the maximum water that we can use per water system. So what MDE does, MDE takes the average number of people per household, which is about two point six. They know that, you know, people use about eighty to a hundred gallons of water per month. So they multiply that by two point six, they come up with about two hundred and fifty gallons of usage per day. So we multiply that by thirty, we come up with seven thousand five hundred gallons per month, should be a normal usage. But we realized that people are going to irrigate, they're going to water their lawns, going to water their flowers, things like that. So we actually added another additional ten percent to that, to that seven thousand five hundred, we come up with about ten thousand gallons. So that's the first tier. So if the customers exceed that first tier, the idea is that they'll go to note on the bill saying you exceeded the ten thousand, you know, gallon per month limit. You know, here's some conservation tips, have a great day. The next tier is the thirty thousand gallon per month limit. The way we come up with that is we use that same seven thousand five hundred gallons per month. We put a peaking factor of about four, which kind of translates to our, our wastewater design side. So that's how we get the thirty thousand gallons per month. Once we, once a customer exceeds thirty thousand gallons per month, then they, then they start getting letters that we can, they need to conserve or, you know, potentially that their water will be cut off or their water will, the water flow will be reduced. So we, we've changed the two tiers in there as well. We've also removed any fines. The previous iteration of the policy did have fines of like twenty-five and fifty dollars. So we've removed those, we've removed all the fines unless we're at ninety percent of the system capacity or if there is a water conservation declaration or a drought declaration by the governor. Penalties really cannot be imposed unless the law is violated. So those are the changes to the, to the water conservation policy. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'll use the example of the pier that was leaking for the month. What, how do we manage that versus this?
So in that case, like you say, once again, our billing reading is about a month behind. Like, like, like we were just talking about, if we had the AMI, we would be able to notify or notify the customer more, more rapidly. But in a case like this, what would happen is that, you know, the report would be run, we would see that he's using a hundred and twenty-some thousand gallons, which is way over the allocation, he'd get a letter. You know, clearly, if it, if it, you know, his, his usage is, you know, a couple hundred gallons per month prior to that, and suddenly jumps up to a hundred and twenty, I, I think it'd be pretty clear to us that he has a leak and we would contact him. But if he was not responsive and he kept up that, that usage, then he would get. But if he was not responsive and he kept up that that usage, then he would get the second letter, you know. Uh, once again, if he was still non-responsive, um, from there, we would either cut his water off or we would actually reduce his water flow, uh, at the meter.
But this this notice to them is is at least a month after it actually happens.
With our current technology, it'll be at least a month after.
Would it's a month after a month show effect or where is it implemented on the beginning of the second month, or?
It would be after two billing cycles. And the other thing that we are looking at is we are looking at changing the the billing tiers to match, uh, the water conservation policy. If you had noticed on the, uh, previous memos, I think the the tiers were, uh, zero, two.
Five.
Five, uh, and so we're we're looking at changing that to zero to ten, ten to thirty, and then thirty and above.
Which we have the rate study, uh, solicitation is out right now, and that's part of that is for them to look at that, you know, different tier levels.
And your bills, for example, in November are based on the meter reads in the prior month, which don't happen in one day or one week. For several meter technicians, it it takes them, I forget how many routes we have.
Sixteen, we have sixteen routes.
Sixteen different routes that have to be run manually. We do have the radio technology, meaning that you you drive by, you don't have to physically read it, but that still takes more than just a day or a week to do. So that's why we're one month behind. So we don't know till we run the report, a month after that leak's already occurred. And it's our opinion that there's some, there's some responsibility on our part to notify them at that time, not be overly bearing by threatening turnoffs and fines and, uh, water conservation mandates to give them at least another thirty days to make some.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. Yeah, I know, we're we're talking about kind of upgrading the technology that, uh, you know, and hopefully that we're when we're looking at that, we're looking at it so that I'll use that same example is is we already have plugged in what their average is for the month, and it automatically then is gonna put an alert in that we say you got something going on here. Um, and hopefully, first of all, that helps get somebody to notice quicker as far as the the water leak or vice versa. It also gets noticed quicker that, hey, we're now in the middle of the summer and you're, we're not telling you until September, it doesn't necessarily solve what the real issue is in terms of the.
Well, I will tell you, when we when we ran the reports for the over-usage, uh, it was about five percent of the eighteen thousand were were over ten thousand. There was only about half a percent were over the thirty thousand limit. Right, so so really, the 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 usage, the excessive usage is pretty miniscule. But when you have consistently people using eighty, ninety thousand gallons of water a month to water their grass, I mean, it's it's different than than a water leak.
No, but but the technology referred to can can implement both of those issues, so.
And Commissioner Dugan, when we bring this back, I think what the Denver told us is there's a customer portal. That's always the most expensive part, for whatever reason. Customers will be able to do a couple of things. One, set their own limits for their own self-notification and also allow us to send auto replies based on their their reads at that time. So it'll be real time, not only on our side, but the customer will be able to set their own limits even lower than than our own our own thresholds, and they'll get auto notified by.
Um, my question, though, when you notify the customer, you send them a letter, I'm assuming with the bill, and you wait for them to reply, and if they don't reply, you're just waiting for the next billing cycle to come around to tell them again. Can we maybe do something there to, like the pier leak, it was a hundred thousand gallons?
Like the Lunderstown one, we actually went to their house and then tagged the door.
Response there. I understand it was HOA, but a phone call or something?
Yeah, they we had difficulty getting, uh, finding someone at the pier.
Right.
Uh, that's why it took.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen, um, you know, the texted letters, of course, but it seems to me that from the way you described it, but the first one is basically just a notification, but there was nothing that says you must do this or you will be. You know, uh.
Correct, the 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 first letter is more of a notification. Uh, you know, please conserve, here's some conservation tips, and and what what, once again, once that that for the second continuous billing cycle, that's where the
Right.
the the other letter would go out, basically requiring action on the customer's part.
And we call it, uh, so continuous flow is really the first one, and we can see that there's been continuous flow, and we can say, oh, that's probably a leak. The excessive use is more than one month, and if, and then there's the limit for that one.
One quick little question. On a pier, uh, do you know where the leak was? Was it in the ground going to the pier? Or is it out on the pier and? Okay. Cause at a certain point, you know, you have a whole same community like I have. If we have water out on the pier leaking, somebody should have seen it. I mean, does negligence or anything come in into play there? Or is this an underground going to the pier where nobody would have seen it? And and would, I mean, I, we've already given them the dispensation, so to speak, but I'm just wondering somebody in the community not sees, I know you're not using the piers much this time of year, but I was just wondering if you knew where that leak was?
I I do not.
Okay.
I think you're speculating.
I withdraw my question.
And their response was.
These are obviously all on the private side. And we wait for the repairs to be done. And we inspect, we make sure that the water's returning. Not that we don't care where the where the leak is. We have an obligation to let them know there is one and it's possibly on their side, and we still leave that to them. Even though it is public.
Well, the the main thing I was thinking is if it was visible, at what point does it become negligent that nobody in the whole community notified the HOA that, hey, you got water spraying up in the air from a broken pipe? But if it's underground, that's that's a whole different story. I was just wondering if that was even in in play.
Maybe a point of contact for the HOA, probably.
Yeah, and it it almost sounds like it was not visible because
Right.
the plumber was unsure whether it was underground or at the connection, so he replaced the whole underground.
Oh, okay. That might have answered the question right there, then. Obviously, was that out on the pier, you know?
Yeah. My 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 original question was more along the lines of should your initial letter say, should this not be remedied before the end of the month? You know, then, you know, there is the opportunity of 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 penalties, if you wish. You know, just sort of people don't say, oh, well, you know, you know, just wait until they come to us.
I got another month, right?
Yeah.
We'll reach out. I thought there was, I thought there was a closing sentence. It doesn't say failure to result in, but I think it does outline the possible, other possible remedies. It's not resolved. I'm pretty sure we left that in, but we'll follow up with it, you know? I think the first letter does have that in it, but it's at the end, it doesn't start off that.
All right, um, any more questions, observations? We have a motion. Can someone make a motion?
I'll do it.
Yep.
Move that the commission approve and adopt the water conservation policy, excessive usage and water restrictions, policy number OPW dash two one dash zero one, as amended. Further move that this policy shall replace all existing policies and or procedures regarding water conservation and shall become effective immediately.
Have a second there?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other questions? That's it. Thank you. So now we have chlorine gas, right?
Yep. The next thing up for the, uh, questions, uh, the board department is the contract for purchase of chlorine gas, a hundred and fifty pound cylinders. Uh, chlorine gas is the most widely used technological means of disinfectioning water in which longer industry. The G permit parameters of Marley County facility, the facility does use chlorine gas. Uh, we are required to meet a certain permit limit for people, coliforms. So down there is a thou three and a half, five morning gallons per day. So we do use a lot of chlorine at that facility. Uh, this is a safe and economical solution, providing, uh, in affluent, uh, while maintaining compliance with all applicable regulations. Chlorine gas is about seventy-five percent cheaper than liquid hypochlorite that you guys approved, uh, last month. It is it is cheaper, but, uh, with the reason why we don't use it out in the field at the at some of the water stations is is there's a greater safety issue when you're using chlorine gas. So therefore, today, I am requesting board approval, uh, and award the chlorine gas a hundred and fifty pound cylinders contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, J C I Jones of Milford, Virginia, at the unit prices submitted for bid dated October twenty-second. That will take any questions.
So that effectively is is to, um, to implement the motion of last month. It's effectively a motion to implement what we approved last month. Cause I take it you need the tanks to be able to.
Well, I know this was approved last month, so this is a for gas.
Right, yeah. Any, any questions, observations? Right, do we have a motion? Someone?
I'll read it.
I can read them. Okay.
Yeah. Move that the commission accept and award the chlorine gas a hundred and fifty pound cylinders, contract number twenty-five dash oh four dash F to J C I Jones of Milford, Virginia, at the unit prices submitted in their bid dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Further move that staff be authorized and directed to sign all documentation relating to this contract award, including but not limited to the contract, contract renewals and all approved amendments.
Okay, do I have a second there?
Second.
Any observations, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, uh, address. Okay, continuing business. Here we go. We're back into the budget sessions. Right? Last one, isn't that interesting?
Um, commissioners, so a a large portion of this presentation is a reiteration from our October meeting. We today will touch on the different C, uh, capital improvement budget projects um, and some highlights. Our first addition each year is what was approved in the plan, so the FY twenty-five capital budget, what was approved for FY twenty-six. So, so. Um, so each year, we try to, uh, maintain our capital contribution charges, our system improvement charges equal to the projections that we made in fiscal year twenty-five. We, this year will address the system improvement impact, the impact to that charge based on, um, I believe we told you in October, we had applied for Bay restoration funding, which we did not receive, um, so we will need to incorporate that, but we will definitely be looking at projects and how we can realign to have as minimal impact on our capital budget rates as possible. Rate stabilization, um, we, at each year, we review all our projects and the allocation is as to how they're split between rehabilitation renewal projects versus new and expansion projects as they're each funded differently through, uh, system improvement and capital contribution. Um, engineering does a very close look at all the projects and what percentage might be new versus rehab. Well, I again, maintain our connection incentive programs. We started the inflow and infiltration loan program for low income. Um, we'll continue with that. We also started the lead and copper service line for residents. And I think, and Metcom has already determined that we do not have, um, lead lines in our system, so.
They're still program eligible? We got our, we got our legislative piece set up prior to when the inventory was completed. Uh, we found that we were basically red tree. Uh, we have no web service lines in our inventory. That inventory was set up in the U D as required. I'm not sure what kind of a response it will provide. It may be a year or two before we hear, but the good news is we have a program in place that allows the eligibility for whether it's used or. I think we maintain that eligibility.
Right.
But we'll, we'll cycle them later.
That's good. Uh, we will maintain priority on funding of our renewal and rehab projects. You'll see, um, how we prioritize that funding. And then continue to prioritize projects that address the I N I and, um, S S O's uh, as they relate to the consent decree. Maintain our fiscal year twenty-five level of E D U's, and we've kept that in the plan all the way out through twenty thirty-one for water and sewer. It's it's, uh, it's very difficult to map that trend, but, um, we have found and it's worked well right now for us to maintain each year without increasing or decreasing. And then the, we have, uh, a self-imposed debt cap of a hundred and twenty million. Our actual, actual experience of debt, we've been able to maintain below that one twenty million. And, but of course, we'll get that every year also. And then we also talked about, uh, future plans for like the Marley Taylor plant. You know, as far as expansion and, um, could we, uh, establish a sinking fund? Uh, there's different methods there. The town of Lunderstown has an ordinance that would require, if we went that route, um, you would be charging a fee, an additional fee, and set it aside for future expansion of Marley Taylor. Um, that would require legislation. The other option that we were discussing was, um, at the end of every fiscal year, when we have our audit, our reserves are identified and possibly, um, identifying a percent. If our reserves exceed policy, then let's set aside X percent into a sinking fund for Marley Taylor.
That seems to be the easiest route that we can control. The legislative process and and Mr. Beaver can attest to this. The current legislation and authority that we have tells us exactly how to calculate our rates and our charging fees. We think that's a little bit ridiculous, so why introduce another one into what we all already think is ridiculous when we can take care of that in-house? Let me bring something to you, uh, that's post-audit related, but I think.
Me?
These are all just reminders. In the FY twenty-five measure, where we have a a six-year capital budget plan, we're working with FY twenty-five projects, but there are some coming onto the screen, if you will, next fiscal year. We just highlighted some of them, so when we go through the budget process next year, you'll see those come forward. Rehabilitation, uh, programs, that's a dollar amount that was approved last year for FY twenty-six. The Maryland two forty-seven Loveville Road Water Main Project may or may not get deferred, uh, by the state. I don't think this is a state one. Water tank inspections, final funding for Southampton, although this one we would slide back for me today, the county. We met with the county last week, last Thursday, I believe. The county is considering shifting that project to twenty twenty-seven. We would follow suit. So you will see it, but it may not be in twenty-six, it may be in twenty-seven. The Town Creek Water System is on schedule for construction next year. Uh, generator replacements, we do two generators per year. Obviously, the larger ones cost a little bit more, they're about fifty-five thousand a piece, and the smaller ones, uh, from in terms of kilowatts, about thirty-five thousand dollars a piece, but we'd like to get at least two per year on the water side. On the next page, the new Wacomico Shore's replacement well, uh, we tried everything we could to have the state allow us to drill it in the same aquifer, which was a shallow aquifer, but they said, nice try. This has to go into the deeper aquifer. That takes that project from around two hundred and fifty to three hundred to about eight hundred to a million. So you'll see that project change in in twenty twenty-six. Uh, we're gonna revisit the timing of our A M R to A M I metering technology. We knew it was gonna be a very expensive proposition, so we had it, I think, out in FY thirty. But after the propagation study that we had done for free and the way that they've explained how they can implement that, using the tops of our water tanks as basically casting a, uh, a net, if you will, our existing meters will be able to be picked up through that net at about fifty-five, I think fifty thousand dollars a piece. We're thinking about revisiting that and making it a phased project starting next year uh, because of the advantages that we talked about just a few minutes ago. Uh, based on the lead and copper inventory, no capital budget impacts. They're they're requiring and mandating every jurisdiction that has lead and copper service lines to come up with a ten-year replacement plan. Uh, that would be a ten-year project. We don't have to put anything in our ten-year C I B. That's great news. You addressed, we had Wacomico Shore's salary repairs. You addressed, we had Wacomico Shore salary repairs in our capital budget, but you approved a budget amendment on the fourteenth of November, so you won't see that any longer. FDR Phase Three, possible reallocation of, of budget authority. Uh, it's under two hundred and forty thousand. It's not a great fiscal impact to us. But we have additional money remaining. In other words, we budgeted, let's say, six hundred thousand. The project's only going to be two fifty. We have some authority there that we can apply to another project. So we'll be bringing that application, uh, to another project. We'll also look at rehabilitation and maintenance projects. If we can put another hundred thousand dollars here or there. Typically, these are the underfunded projects by utility companies and, and any other company. Those rehab projects that are cyclical. You have a twenty-year service life and it's year thirty. It's still operating, let's not replace it. We, we kind of want to get a little bit ahead of that so that it doesn't become critical and required replacement. The MD five, SHA has a project called Maryland Five to Maryland Two Forty-Six. It's both a water and sewer project. The state did not receive funding. They're looking at alternative ways to fund that. We have that coming in in twenty twenty-six. That may be another project deferral. All that means is the calculation for our rates and charges for next year potentially could be lower. But when we introduce those other increases, uh, they're not going to quite offset. Same thing on the sewer side commissioners. I don't necessarily want to go through all of the projects because you'll see them all. Uh, no large changes here, other than to point out Southampton again, maybe something that gets deferred a year. Forest Run wastewater pump station. We are now at ninety-five percent design. That was submitted to the state on December fourth. If there's any changes in the dollar value that we put in last year's budget, we'll make that change with this budget cycle. And the same comment on generators as, as before. Patty's already alluded to these last few bullets. We did not receive day restoration grant funding last year, although the project was eligible. We received extra points because it was in the consent decree. It wasn't enough points based on all the projects that were in mind to receive that grant. So we did receive about three and a half million dollars in anticipated grant funding, which is unfortunate. Uh, the St. Clement Shores Sewer Service Area Extension. As you're aware, we're upgrading St. Clement Shores Treatment Plant. How do people get connected? What does that look like? What is that going to cost? We have a plan for that. We've done a feasibility on that. The idea there is for those that want to connect that we will be implementing a, basically a specialist taxing district where we do the work and we get reimbursed by the community. We think that will work and it'll be a multi-phase project. We'll get into the details of that right back to you. Uh, continued proactive funding of Marley Taylor. Uh, we have one project, it's the third bullet from the bottom, it's Spring Valley Drive. You know, sometimes you do facilities plans and projects come out of that as priority. This particular project came out as a priority because it was flat. It was a gravity line, it's flat. They have something called a self-cleaning velocity. I think it's two feet per second. On a flat gravity line, if you don't have velocity, it doesn't become self-cleaning and there's a lot of accumulation. We ran it, went ahead and televised the lines to see if there was any buildup. Uh, there's absolutely no buildup and it's not quite flat. There seems to be enough flow through the line that it is self-cleaning, so we're going to remove that project. We have too many other priorities and other projects that are critical. So we are going to remove that project. I wish it was three point nine million and we could reallocate. It's only three hundred and ninety thousand. Nonetheless, that helps, that helps. And, uh, we do have a sanitary sewer evaluation and a rehabilitation plan that's required as a part of the consent decree. Based on the timing of those deliverables, that's not going to happen until twenty twenty-seven. So there won't be any impact, there won't be any impact in twenty twenty-six. But we want to prepare by keeping this narrative in place through the next few projects. That's the water and sewer projects in brief, nothing, nothing overly exciting. And again, we'll see every one of those projects in more detail in the end. Come back.
The, the grant we did not get, is that the, uh, annual, uh, applications or is it a, is it a recurring?
It is annual and we will submit every year because we're hoping that maybe in a peak year or in a lower year, there'll be less projects to compete against. Absolutely, sir. Absolutely.
And this, uh, capital contribution charges, you've seen this slide before. According to the plan, it, our rates are calculated to stay flat through twenty thirty. Actually end through twenty thirty-one on the slide, but they will be on a future slide. Both, that's both water and sewer. And system improvement charges, um, have already been calculated in the plan to have a slight increase in, um, twenty twenty-six, but then remain flat out through twenty thirty-one.
And the two slides, I think we brought these to you in October. The primary purpose of reiterating these slides, there was a question asked by one of the board members about our three big projects that are in the consent decree. And just out of curiosity, what's, what's the impact of that on these rates and charges? And you can see on the capital cost recovery side of the prior slide. It's about thirty-three hundred and sixty-four dollars out of about eighty-nine hundred. And if you draw that orange line across, uh, you can see that it'd be pretty consistent with, uh, what we had charged between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four. So you could say if it were not for these projects. I would like to be able to say that we were doing those projects anyway. But to, to your point, the board's point, if it were not for those projects, we would still be maintaining a flat structure on the capital contributions side. And on system improvement, it's only eighty-six cents. I would make that statement on, on the system improvement side, but there is an eighty-six cent of impact from those three projects.
All right.
Yeah?
Next step.
That's it.
One of the most important announcements. Our Christmas party is December eighteenth, eleven AM to one PM. Obviously you're invited. Obviously you're, you're three of yours. We'll open the floor up for some comments if you're here. Come early, come late, come often.
Bring their own liquor, I take it.
Absolutely. That's the biggest thing. On this last page, the rest is a calendar you've seen. We'll be back on January twenty-third.
And we'll have a more developed, uh, CIV budget with, um, all these changes implemented and what it'll look like.
Right.
There shouldn't be anything more than you see here in terms of processes and months. Just the impact as well.
And the last, uh, section are, uh, you can look at the detail of each of the projects and out through twenty thirty.
Excellent. As always, very clear and very precise and very timely.
Thank you.
Way ahead of time, so it's good. All right, thank you. Okay, so, um, future agenda items. So we already mentioned that the, uh, next meeting is January twenty-third. And, and we are in Commissioner member's time. All right, so you had something for commissioners members.
I'd like to, uh, propose giving, uh, employees December twenty-third off as a, I don't know, call it what you want, Christmas present appreciation or whatever. If they're going into, the county gave two days off for their employees. And we gave one at Thanksgiving and we can just do another one at this time. So that's, that's my proposal.
I think the county, uh, voted to provide their employees with the twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve. I think we call it Family Day. And Thursday, the twenty-sixth. Uh, we have Tuesday and Wednesday, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth already. And as Commissioner Alvey pointed out, we did give a, a day during Thanksgiving. So this would be the, the second day. We already have a Family Day or Christmas Eve as a holiday, the county does not. The twenty-third would be the Monday. Might as opposed to the Thursday or the, that Commissioner Alvey's proposing.
What would that mean effectively that you're closed down on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay, and Thursday the county is closed or?
Thursday, the county gave their staff, um, that day off, yes, sir. As a, as a day of leave.
So it's basically, and do they give them the two days before as well or not?
No, they only gave them Christmas Eve, which we already have. But they did not offer any.
So basically we're talking about two versions, so either give them the day before or the day after.
Well, there are many versions you can abide, but under this scenario, yes. Under Roy's, it's Commissioner Alvey's, it's Monday, which would be the day before Christmas Eve. And an, an alternative would be the Thursday, which would be the day after Christmas.
Yeah. What, um, in terms of staff preference, what would be the, uh, the preferred solution? I would, you know, just, uh, just thinking about the number of people who celebrate the day after Christmas. Um, in, in a special fashion. Whereas the day be, the Monday before, the Tuesday before or something else. So it'd be nice to hear what the staff thinks about that or what you think about.
Well, I cannot speak for staff, uh, a hundred percent. Monday certainly is easier because you're already off Sunday. It's only a single day. We have a lot of staff that has days of leave to take. But our annual leave carries over into sick if it's not used. So there's no danger of actually use, losing it if you don't use it. I think the gesture is more important than the day because we continue to operate. Our critical employees have to work no matter what, our on-call people have to work no matter what. But it's Monday or Thursday, I don't know. I think it's more the gesture. It's important.
Any other staff members have an observation in that sense?
Monday or Thursday.
I mean, if the person with a child, I think the day after would be fun just so they can play with their toys and watch them.
Or travel plaster where you're going from, except for so.
There's pros and cons to each, really. The day after, the day after, you have to make a conscious decision to, to take Monday or Friday. I think the day after is.
Yeah. The day after, you're sobering up.
We hate to speak on behalf, you know, it's, it's not that we're reluctant. It's, we hate to speak on behalf of the employees because everyone's situation is so different. But, but even to maybe an optic to the public that the first day of the week, we are open. And at the last day of the, the week, we are open. You know, from, from that standpoint, maybe that's a good way to open and close Christmas.
The other standpoint is that the county is doing Tuesday and Thursday. And we often follow a mirror that people may make that assumption that we not be open on Thursday.
Just by default.
Yeah, Thursday seems like a better day.
All right, Roy, make a motion for Thursday.
It doesn't make any difference to me, I'm retired.
He has a motion.
Then your motion, if you vote, your motion may fail.
Well, uh, if you're not going to say funding it, I would think it doesn't matter either day, right? You want, yeah, since you're funding this, right?
I, I've got a couple dollars.
I got a couple dollars. Do we need to make a motion for that or do you already have a policy or, or what?
I think, well, I can amend my motion to make it to twenty-six.
That would be, that would be good.
If that's, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, you just, you made a suggestion, which doesn't require a vote. So if you'd like to make a motion, understanding that your suggestion will fail if it is brought to motion.
If it's something along the line.
Feel free to do so.
Put a suggestion in the motion. So we'd have a motion somewhere along the line of, uh, consistent with the, uh, the, the, the labor of the, of the county. We recommend or request or grant a, um.
We'd like to grant an additional leave day to all employees on Thursday, December twenty-sixth. Don't worry about the county.
Okay. Okay, don't have to say that, so, all right. So we know what the, what the, what the wording is. You have it?
Make a motion.
You got it.
Just going to say that make a motion to grant additional day of leave the day after Christmas, December twenty-sixth.
I'd like to make a motion that for, uh, a leave day, December twenty-sixth.
Do we have a second there?
I'd like to second that, Roy.
All right, uh, any unopposed? Roy would like to add on Monday, Monday.
Yeah, Monday as well.
Let's just, let's put Monday and Friday.
A friendly amendment.
Noted that Roy will be taking off Monday.
I'm out the digging, Mike.
So we have a motion, uh, for the twenty, adding the twenty-sixth. Do we have a second?
A second, I do.
I do.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? He agrees. Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, so we're in, in commissioners' time, right? Um, we had a question that ra, was raised today in terms of supporting, uh, a particular charity. And, um, I suggested that we could probably discuss that during commission member time. Um, personally, I am somewhat concerned about picking up specific charities without having sort of a request or some kind of a policy as to what we're addressing.
Correct.
Um, and also I think about things like, for example, the scholarship program that we have for, for children and grandchildren, members of the staff, uh, was funded largely by some sources that have disappeared. So whether, you know, that is an appropriate use of, of, um, of Metcom funding, you know, uh, or, or not, you know, how we should handle it.
Well, I, I'd offer this, uh, the, the scholarship program is funded privately. There's no county money, there's no customer money affiliated with it and it will live on in perpetuity. It's set up as a trust, uh, so that does continue. All of the other promotional and fundraising events that we do come out of these employees' pockets, all of them. They're not blessed by the commission, they're not, um, they truly are employee-based out of the goodness of their hearts. Uh, there's nothing done on behalf of the commission, only through the employees. So there is no customer money. I think that's the most important thing to understand, that we don't, we don't match gifts with much of pop and commission money. There's no operating budget money used to match those gifts. So, um, that's a partial answer to your question. Uh, but endorsing any specific, um, charity other than the ones that we have already vetted through our internal process that we, that we vote on each year. For example, I think this year was hospice. We, we selected St. Mary's Hospice and when Hurricane Helene hit, we, and when I say we, it's not the management team, it's not your supervisory team, our entire staff discussed this. We, we sent it out to all of our staff to say, would it be okay if we switched because of the need? It's not because hospice didn't need it, but we just felt the need, uh, for the North Carolina, the Caroli- Carolina states just far outweighed that, at least for us. So the employees with their money decided to do that.
Right.
It is sort of on behalf of the commission, but it's not blessed by the commissioners.
Right.
Uh, so I would just caution any.
Oh, that, that was exactly my concern, is that we don't get into the business of random charities walking in the door with a good idea because there's so many of them.
We are not and, and we have a process where we vet it because you never know, uh, the source of that charity, where their funds go. So we have an internal process and Ann Mary is, is part of that process. She's a forty-year veteran of Metcom. That process has stayed the same. The vetting process has stayed the same, so to introduce a new charity should be going through that same process. That's, that's only my opinion, uh, because you asked me, but I think, I think you'll get concurrence with.
That's also my opinion. I don't think we should have walk-in charities, even if they are, um, backed by one or more members of the staff or one or members of the board. I don't think that that is a way that you, that you assist charity. So, um, that's my personal opinion. Any, anyone else? What, what do we? You, you had a strong, uh, answer, right?
Me?
In support of the young.
I didn't.
Someone who, one of, one of, um, one of the.
Commissioner Gold, I believe.
No, yeah. Yeah, he did say that, uh, he, he thought it was good and all that other things, but that's over and above.
Yeah.
The process.
I think, I think, I think it is a very nice charity as well.
Yeah.
But, but I can think of some, several dozen more.
Yeah, that's what I say.
You know, so.
It's not, it's not the, it's not the act, it's not the dollar amount, it's not whether the charity is reputable. It, it's none of that. It's when you're doing something on behalf of a body, uh, you have to go through that body's process.
Right.
And ours is not onerous, I can assure you that.
Okay, so any other observations or questions about that?
So, well, not something, but maybe I didn't get the gist of, but what would we ask to do? To bless it or?
Match it.
Prove it or match it or? I wasn't sure what the question was.
I think, and, and I didn't read the email as much as others perhaps did. I think, and I didn't read the email as much as others perhaps did. I think the email was, I have done this on your behalf. I think that's the gist of it. And it's the latter part of that statement, that, I don't want to use the word troublesome, that is not quite accurate. That raises some concern for us.
But there was a letter of request, right? There was a letter that was sent to Metcom requesting a donation? And then as a reply?
There was no letter.
I thought I saw something from the, from the charity itself.
So I think that she simply has part of the attachment to the individual. There was a link that then populated when you opened the email to give you information related to that charity.
Okay.
The donation for on you open that.
Right. Okay, so I think everybody agrees that we are not in the business of picking charities or supporting specific charities, except as they are related to the staff, you know, the way in which you'll be doing it for the next forty years, I'm sure. So, you know, so we're in good hands.
I don't think we need a motion because the information was provided to you, and through me or us here, we will, we will take that back.
Right.
Absolutely. Do we know?
Thank you, God bless. Yep. Thank you very much. Yeah, appreciate it.
So while you all are still in commissioner's time, I did provide you all each with a copy of the invitation to our event, our holiday event next Wednesday.
Everybody has it.
Come and enjoy, some good food with us, good food, good company. The other thing I've given you is the meeting dates for twenty twenty-five, which I will send to you at time of date. But wanted to give you that copy just so you know, those are the dates that we're talking out there. One of, one of those is the date May that is potential joint meeting with the county commissioners, and that would be a Tuesday. So we'll keep you apprised of that as everything kind of finalizes out. That ties in with the approval of our capital improvement budget and capital improvement plan. So that's why that date was plugged in, and that's kind of tentatively on there. More to follow, but that's what I've got for you so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other matters for commissioners, members, commissioners, observations? Okay, executive session is next. So we have a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Secondaire?
Executive session.
Secondaire, if there are reasons.
A reason?
statewide, and that's why it's printed on your agenda?
For property acquisition and litigation.
Right.
I'll restate. Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and property acquisition.
Secondaire. All in favor? Aye.
Get it ready. I haven't been getting much right today.
Right, so let's, he gave you the sign, you're ready, right? They can go back to regular session? Okay. So regular session, we have to close, or we have to approve this meeting, right?
Well, why don't we move to, to discuss the executive session?
I make a motion that we approve as discussed in executive session. Authorize staff to proceed. Authorize staff to proceed as discussed in executive session.
And we have secondaire?
There's a lot of assets.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we need a separate motion to approve this minute?
Commissioner Alvey.
You can have a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, December twelfth, executive session.
Oh, that would be the fourth agenda.
Before fourteen. It says twelve.
I make a motion to.
You're, you're permitting the.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
The executive session minutes dated, dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I second that motion.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a motion to return?
I make that motion to.
Secondaire? All in favor?
This kind of fast.